That Ryan Train Tinker may install a wifi camera directly over the vending machine pointed down to the front of the machine. To hopefully prevent any vandalism and when someone calls for a refund, he confirms and can return. A your on camera sign and contact number is recommended to be placed on the side of the machine as well. The cost of the camera and signage is on the owner. Number three moved by Mike Blair, seconded by Mike Elliott for Ryan Train Tinker. To pay a monthly payment of twenty five dollars for the vending machine. Starting July twenty uh twenty twenty three and reviewing in October on canteen reopeners. All in favor? Opposed? And carried. For finance, consideration of the operating budget for twenty twenty three. Okay, so um. This is our first uh my first anyways worry into this type of thing, so uh. Rosie, can you just let us know what 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 do we do right now? Is this for resolution? Is it a discussion or?
The budget in your package, I believe, so if there's any Lindsay wants to do a presentation or review or not, I don't know. You've already had it in committee.
Do you want to bring up something? Anyways, I mean, there's not a lot of. I'm really incorporating in uh everything we discussed in previous two actually meetings. The net and I'm giving you a summary here, this is the very first summary, right? And it does sort of summarize the budget for the year. Now, of course, the. The uh give you all the schedules that are attached to the file. The tax and budget file has all the schedules, you have five schedules there. The first one is the revenues, right? There's your net revenues before your tax levies. So all the township uh operating revenues, not including tax levies, come to two point three million. All the expenses, four point seven million. You get some surplus in there to push it in. Uh so you've got a total balance of two point two five three million before you your transfers to capital. So go down further. Of course, the four hundred thirty nine oh sixty five capital. Which is the same number that we had at the previous meeting. We'll quickly go to the capital budget in a moment. To explain the minimum, the fire department change we needed there, right? But we'll do this quickly, go over this first. Uh so total municipal levies required, when you add those together, comes to two point six nine two. The twenty twenty two levies were the two point five nine two, right? Um which means the net levy increase a hundred thousand five dollars. I guess I should have rounded that, but I wasn't even considering. That part of it. Uh so a hundred five put out sound a little bit furthered out, that results in um. Actual. Total levy of three point five four, right? Okay, which of course is less than a. Tax rate because the um as we went on previously, and these are all the changes in levies over the years now. Um but for the one year for this year here, it's a hundred one hundred point zero zero five, right? Which comes with it when you include the education having no increase, gets us down to a three point five four levy increase, right? So we're down a little further, so I can just. Uh that means that the actual red on our tour uh residential property taxpayer. With all taxes on both uh special areas, their actual tax rate increases two point nine seven six. Which is less than the levy because of the increased assessment. Um the commercial is actually two point six four four. So their tax rate increase in the commercial property that those numbers slightly changed would be a two point six four four increase. And this is just an example of the different uh taxes on properties with different assessments, commercial, residential, commercial. And the increase in taxes that this is resulting in, about two point nine seven to two point six four residential, commercial. So fifty thousand uh eighty five thousand dollar host is taxed at a two five oh six, the increase would be seventy two forty five. Commercial property assessed a hundred and five, the tax would be six point five, the increase would be a hundred sixty nine. I always love to give this one because there is enough progress that don't have the sand in special area rate, really it's higher than rural properties, right? Their actual increase. Is uh is slightly. Well, we are in the residential, it's slightly higher, three point oh two. So eighty five thousand ends up with a tax increase of sixty oh one. And it's less because of course they don't have the sand in it, right? But there are percent increases slightly higher. And then the commercial is actually uh two six one eight instead of two six four four. And their increase is a hundred thirty nine seventy eight because of sanitation brought in there. Do you have anything else for the downtown? Okay, just go in the uh capital budget quickly. Just so you can see. Which is scheduled. Uh that right there, schedule three or something like that, by law. And so as I change of change of case, of course, is we removed the housing. I think it was twenty five thousand uh to do the blueprints or some of the drawings for the housing and we switched it in the fire department equipment. Right here. Yeah, twenty five thousand. And so the total block again, the actual transfers from general fund to a capital uh didn't actually change at all. Um we did make this uh slight change and and from when we last talked, we we kind of did a lot, a little bit more work on these special air rates. Okay, we prior to that, we hadn't even banned a lot of them, but now we did. We increased the fire special air rate by five thousand dollars and then we increased the sand rate by ten thousand. I think I'd already sort of adjusted or discussed that ten thousand sand rate. Um but because of this twenty five, we we increased the fire one by five. Okay, so but that being said, the changing, the changing the sand rate actually impacts especially people who don't have sand. They will see a substantial lower increase than somebody who has sand when you're changing that sand rate. Next person in the property is only uh what a third of the sand rate, hence doesn't impact the same amount. And ninety seven percent of property, right, ninety eight percent have next version property. Um so it doesn't truly affect and it hugely went from two ninety seven to three point oh one. Like the increase in that five five thousand dollars. Um I don't know if you want to get into the capital anymore than that, I mean, you guys have done the capital a number of times, right?
Up above though, there was uh what the hospital sanitation.
And this one you're getting?
Yeah.
That's the design.
Oh, yeah, that. Don't forget, I didn't even prepare this, right? I didn't work on this, I know what that is. I think that's the design for Stewart. Upgrade, they should have on holding road to the hospital. And I was that's needed or. For their upgrade, their their venture construction or an improvement to what they've got there. Right now it goes to Fifth Street, I think that's the part of the owner.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, uh yeah, they're also looking at putting a long term.
Yeah, that's what I meant, that's the upgrade. I mean, that's obviously, I think the full project, this is literally just the design is a is a huge project, right? Yeah, sure, the door, but I think it's substantial.
And everyone understands like what how the the change came about with the, so I'll just explain a little bit for our audience members, so. Um the twenty five thousand that was set aside for the drawings, um the investor. At Atlas Properties agreed to do the drawings, so we will not be spending that twenty five thousand dollars. And um councillor Sakamoto brought brought to my attention when she lives at a fire. Um when she was at a fire meeting, the the chief had asked if if his capital budget had been approved. And then when we looked at the budget, there there was nothing in there except for the jaws of life, so. Um there was a larger ask than that, but it was over a couple of years. So we just looked at maybe moving that twenty five thousand dollars into the fire, which would probably take care of fifty percent of what they've been asking for within the next. Two, three years, so that's where that's where that came from, just in case anybody's interested in understanding why we amended the capital budget. Okay, so. Any other questions or? Anything for Louisiana Sam?
Do you want, we just go with bylaws real quick, I'm just trying to explain very quick. The first bylaw is tax ratios, we talked about the tax ratios and you'll probably get into tax ratios in future years, especially as I start talking about reassessments and stuff. That being said, like I said previously with respective tax ratios, um. Many municipalities have made major changes to them and you'll see when there is an assessment changes. Um if there's a reassessment next year or future years, when you start filling out the ratios and there's also assessment change. Impact on the allocation, which only taxes within the different classes property, right? And then this change is also immediate, so if you increase the commercial, which is everybody was talking about. Um it's going on residential, residential is already seeing a big increase or a lot of them are saying because of the assessment increase. Then you'd see more tax increase because of that, right? Yeah, because of the ratio change. So this suggests you have to do this uh kind of at the start of the year, early in the year, set your ratios for the year. Rations are the same as last year. Like I said, the only ratio outside of. Outside of the new multi-res, that's changed, I think, of the commercial. Okay, next bylaw, tax reductions, this is just the. My mind of formality and it's sending reductions for vacant land in the industrial and commercial. At sort of the common rates across the province, which is the thirty percent for commercial and thirty five percent for industrial. Used to be the old system. That properties were assessed, vacant, commercial, vacant, industrial, and then they still kind of are, but. And then and and their assessment would be. Already have that built in the thirty and thirty five percent, now it's just potentially if they're vacant. Um and assess vacant, then the tax rate is reduced because they're vacant by the thirty and thirty five percent. Next, sorry, Sam. So then, of course, the next one is is truly the tax bylaw. And this is just setting um initially all the levies. Um levy amounts. So you got the we including education, which we uh we don't set those rates really, right? Those rates are set by the province, they're just the the rates that they provide, I mean, the assessments we have from them back, right? To create the educational levy. Um you got your general levy, your uh next person in property, your sand, the BIA. Okay, keep going down, Sam. Schedules one to five, which we'll glance at in a second, which are really the budget, okay, for the for the town. And includes schedule five is the excluded uh expenses from your budget. That are part of your financial statements, which all comes back to the piece of accounting change. Um you go on, we're gonna keep on Sam, go to the schedule actually. Yeah, so this 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 is the actual, the tax rate schedule is uh assessment of all the. In each of the classes of property. Uh with each of the area rates, right? So it's just literally the total assessment, so that one there, the general rate. The total uh assessment times the tax rate, which is what we're setting, this bylaw is going to set these rates right here. Okay, that's the taxing, of course, those tax rates of the tax rates. That are calculated based on budget, what we did, and of course, the budget calculator I provided to you guys two meetings ago. Anyways, so the total, you know, there's the total municipal general levy, two point one three seven five forty. This is the total education levy. Two hundred thirty eight thousand, drop substantially, if you look at your original little schedule, how much it's dropped in sixteen years, whatever it's been since two thousand and eight. A lot of our taxation room, levy room is actually there and a lot of the municipalities across the territory because the tax rates, education. More than split in half what they were and no municipalities. Uh this is the sand rate, this whole sand, two thirty five, nine ten, based on all those classes of properties and. This is just the protection for the property, keep going Sam, nice schedule. And we like the actual tax rates and classes coming within each class, so the first schedule is the. The revenues. All municipalities revenue, so you I provided you this schedule previously, then now I put in sort of the the taxes to get the total revenues. For the year, and that's going to balance the total expenses to give you the balanced budget in the cash basis budget, okay, next. And this is of course the same now because the expenses for twenty twenty three um broken down by a department. And so the total expenses, of course, and the total expensive data is going to balance with the total revenues for the year to give you your bill. And of course, we got all, you know, line item detail that adds up ties to each one of these lines, right? Then the capital budget. Which you just seemingly. And like I said. These last three, not including OCIF, are really municipal funds, right? Debt, reserve fund, gas tax, which is we separate from your fund, but every year we get it, we put reserve funds and we take it out to you. Okay, and then of course, general fund is your taxation, how much money from your current taxes are going towards those capital projects. So total of six twenty four, including water, four hundred thirty nine oh sixty five, not including water. Of your tax money this year is going towards these capital projects, but we're using. Two hundred thirty six five in debt, sorry, in reserve funds, and then I think we have forty four thousand in debt, which is. You go on back, the next schedule is reserve fund and debt, which you haven't actually quite seen. You just do this together quick. So this is sort of your reserve fund budget for the year then. Two point three seven million to start the year. We use quite a bit, actually in twenty twenty three. We used, I think, five hundred thousand, over five hundred thousand reserve funds, we did a couple of big, oh maybe, but only one big project, which is McCurdy. Um uh which yeah, I think was McCurdy, might use almost five hundred thousand reserve funds. Um because there was only so much grab money in that project, it was like eight, nine hundred thousand dollar project. So anyways, um. This is money. Going towards your projects and this this it's, yeah, this is the money going to capital, which is just on that last schedule. Gas tax, we're using a hundred thousand, reserve fund, a hundred thirty six five, and new return debt of forty four seven, so this is deeply in the reserve funds, but. Then we have money going back in reserve funds, most of this money, of course, is that debt we paid. And I can, you know, we went over that debt we paid on the schedule, last financing or two financing, right? The only other that isn't is seventeen fifty, that's predominantly, and it's just a number, it's AutoX. Our share of AutoX that goes into the reserve fund for the fire department, okay? Um or portion of the AutoX that goes into the reserve fund, it 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 fluctuates, depends how many calls in for the year. It it could be as high as five thousand dollars, I I think it's like that's twenty percent. So they, you know, they get a nice little chunk chase and sixty percent with the fire department to allocate as they can see that anyways, that's something else. That's the gas tax money, one oh three eight. There's the surplus of the waters, one oh six, two sixty two, um that's the balancing among the water, so that you're in your. Water budget is balanced and none of the water is funding. The general or vice versa, general funding the water, right? Water self-sufficient, we took it on the capital side, took it on the operating side, so that the water actually balances with the year. And then here's your return debt, I just got an interest number of thirty five, so like the reserve funds are going to earn thirty five thousand interest if you're independent and separate from. The most uh the interest earned on the the debt. End of the year. It's two point five four nine million.
So that that's an increase over the the previous year.
Yes, yes, because we do like, the the last year is five hundred thousand plus, I don't remember the number, I didn't remember, we just looked at it quickly yesterday. Um that was a big number in one year.
Yeah.
Very, but I mean, once again, this because we had a big project that was, I don't remember the percentage, but a high percentage was funded by the municipality, right? And roads projects, unless you're getting some on. Well, generally, there's no, there's no grants out there. So you're using the the gas tax money for that. And when gas tax started, you weren't even just using roads. Uh even though, you know, that's where the money is coming from. They're right, initially they made it, then they made it for environmental projects and had a real environmental. But everyone started rationalizing, and still these are. But you cannot rationalize how roads broke down, can you, environmental beneficial as news, new better road, it's better for the people to traverse the people walking, etc. So a good part of your gas tax money now, I mean, for probably originally our gas tax money went out water, so. Okay, and uh storms were, but. And then this is just the internal debt thing, but we went over the schedule previously, it's part of the schedule here just to show you where that money is coming from and what makes that up. Okay, last one, schedule five. Do you have that one here, Sam? This is the uh. Impact and solution, amortization, post-employment landfill closure expense from your current year, through missing budget. Um this municipal rate, two eighty four oh nine, it's a requirement of the municipal act to report this to council. Uh to council more or less accept this report. It's the. I don't know, I've maybe some of the cities do, uh I'm not sure if any places do, but practically your budgets are now running cash basis. Okay, budgets you're seeing here, your franchise, it's mentioned, but your financial statements. Are piece out, okay, and they're going to have amortization, they're going to have all these in there, but when you do that, capital investments are actually not an expense. When you go to the cash, non-cash basis, okay, and the amortization isn't there, so they actually. And other things, uh some go in, i.e. the post post-employment landfill closure expense. Uh and then some things come out, which predominantly is your capital expense, and the reality is that in fact, if and you guys didn't see. I wasn't here for it, but you guys did see in twenty twenty financial statements or draft financial statements in the others. And you would have seen a massive surplus, I don't recall exactly what it was in that. But it would be substantially more than your cash operating surplus, which might have been, you know, hundreds of thousands, we were talking. Uh I don't even remember what it is, but it may have been millions, right? Which isn't the same as the cash surplus at all, and you would need a accounting. Uh explanation or review to actually explain what that is, I think it's better to actually do with the full financial statements in the order here. To explain the big difference between that, um but because it's a cash basis. You 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 don't include amortization, whether you include an expense line for uh the employment expenses. And the post-closure li- uh landfill, you. You can, you you may not, uh we haven't specifically included. Any of them, but within our budget and our financials, we actually do have a moments for good portion of the. No, amortization, no, we don't, but we have a lot of money in reserve funds and we put money away in the reserve funds every year, nowhere to find. Um your capital, right, because I mean, the biggest thing that everyone knows from the PISA asset management. That most municipalities, in the very much included, is underfunded for true capitalization and all your capital investments that are out there. And most of that's dealing with your infrastructure, both your roads and your equipment. Um but I mean, especially roads in your linear assets in your road, right, sewer, water, lines and roads. That were underfunded, that truly we don't raise enough money from taxes or other to fully fund replacement value of all that stuff. And I mean, that that's spelled out pretty clearly in asset management, the planning, so. So that's what then that nine hundred sixteen five seventy four uh for twenty twenty two, nine hundred twenty or twenty twenty three, we sort of speak to to an extent. Post-employment expenses, um. You you we have a number, not not a lot of post-employment expenses, there's healthcare, right, that stays in all of your retiree. And there's also sickling benefits when, I mean, it's post-employment, um when you retire and you can take, right, that a certain margin or sickly that you accumulate. But in reality, you do have, although we don't budget an expense item in the year in your operating budget. We do have a reserve fund amount of a hundred thousand dollars to fund that. And that generally does fund it. Okay, it's never been an issue with respect to that, and then post uh closure landfill, now, a landfill, when you go to close it. Uh is is long-term, big expense potentially, our our landfill's got many years of life left. I haven't seen the study for a while, I they're doing studies, I don't know if you guys have seen it. In public works in the last year. I don't remember even, I don't even want to get into that too much, but the number isn't actually huge, it's saying right now approximately a hundred ten, a hundred twelve thousand. Annual liability expense for that future post-closure, you know, so if you're trying to fund that now. That's what you should have, you know, away, we have a hundred forty thousand in reserve funds to fund this liability.
So you're saying a hundred and ten a year should be.
No, no, I don't think so. I think that's actually what they're saying right now, it should be, but by the time you get there. It's thirty or fifty years from now, and it is, we're talking, those take a year away. Um it'll be. Yeah, I'll let you throw a number out there. I don't want to be off, you know, I want to say five million and it's two million, or I want to say a million, it's five, no, I mean, it's a substantial number. Now, it's not like you pay that number one time fat fee, it's truly a number of all the expenses associated with ongoing. As well as literally closure of it at the time, right? Like uh this is just where, like most most of this, they continue to compare budgets on a traditional cash basis, the cash. Basic basis, which provides a clear and concise understanding of critical budget information. Due to this, there's no financial impact from dissolution of the expenses on the budget, and this document intended to act on the accounting reconciliation between the two reporting methods. So this is just really a kind of a quick synopsis, uh. Those that aren't included in your cash budget. These excluded statements are pretty common in municipalities, including cities, I believe. Um and it only changed when they brought the PISA accounting in um back and I'm not going to, you remember here. I don't know how the years, but that would, it's not coming to the PISA accounting. Um it only came into place at that time, um. Yeah, so I don't have much more to say on that, unless you have a question or two, it's actually better to sort of quickly review that for the financial statements. For us to go with what that truly means in detail.
We said the landfill has a lot more time, now, what what do you mean by a lot more time?
Well, I mean, we've used the area of the plant, the landfill has been used less than fifty percent. And that landfill's been existed since the seventies, maybe late seventies, eighties, and in reality. We sort of keep adding to it, um you know, we had a. Improve the efficiencies of the use of it to extend its length even further. Being that, you know, we're probably hoping, I I think when we started, we were probably talking fifty to a hundred years of life left. We we might have reduced it some, not due to usage, but due to thoughts and planning and and. Because since then, we've gotten surveys, more studies, reports done, but I I I think we're probably still well over fifty years of life left. But I mean, at some point, right, when you're getting down, I mean, in theory, they're saying. Something to be aware of, with all PISA and asset management accounting and planning, and it's something to be aware of, understand. Appreciate and possibly start thinking about funding, okay, same with that, so it is something that at some point. Councils are going to have to start saying, are we going to, are we going to fund that?
Not this council.
Hey, they put a hundred forty thousand in, right? Uh eventually, that number's going to have to grow. Yeah, right, for that. And of course, and that, I think that I, that's the closure, that's not opening up the new one, but maybe. I mean, there there are some municipalities that have struggled with that in the region. I could be wrong, I don't want to kind of name second, but I didn't so much. Who those are, but it wasn't renewed, right? I think Verifond maybe.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Really, it might still be ongoing, right, it's been going on for years. So when you're still, you know, when you get down to say twenty years of life. Better start planning. Once again.
Yeah.
For that specifically. Um amortization, well, that's amortization's really, you know, ties into it, is all part of your asset manager planning and your capital. Um placement planning, right? Okay, I think that's the end of the schedules. Your last two bylaws. Oh, yeah, okay, sorry, um. Second last while, that was just literally the due dates and the interest, that type of thing, right? I think the due dates are the same, you're getting them out, the whole plan, the reason why I have the meeting now is so we get them out the same day we normally do. It's nice to have that consistent due date, you're used to them, due dates to be end of August, end of October again, right? Then the last one is, the second last one is adopt option dues for administering, like something that this council, the previous council had nothing to do with, but I saw where they're. I think they're still especially the passive bylaw, and it's going to cap it. Which you probably. There's a little bit of cap a year day, but when they start doing reassessments. They and I mentioned this to you previously about the other capping work, um. We haven't had capping now for probably eight, ten years, but we were, I am trying to extend by capping for our first five to ten years. And when they've been reassessed, there's been changing reassessments. People's assessments, if they had a drop in assessments, and you saw it in residential, if they had a drop, they got it immediately, or if they had an increase in assessment, it actually got phased in generally over four years, so they'd see a twenty-five percent increase a year. Okay, but the capping on the three protected classes, not residential, commercial, multi-res, and industrial. Um, actually capped them so that they increased by a maximum amount. Every year, and it wasn't twenty-five, I don't remember what the number was, but potentially, if they had a big amount, that they say their taxes were increasing double because of the reassessment. It might have only went up ten percent a year, hence the theory would would take up ten years to get to their maximum taxes through this capping method. Uh, and it did, it took us five to ten years to get everyone to where they're being taxed without a cap. On their actual assessed value, okay?
Ten years.
And if there's a reassessment. I don't know, like, I, I feel like the, the reassessment didn't impact anymore, because once they were there, then they had reassessment, but if there was a reassessment where there's reallocation of your taxes. And you had big drastic changes again within those protected classes, uh, how much individual properties are paid, you might see that again. They still have it in there, there's still the rules, there's still passed by law saying what your rules are.
Yeah.
But I mean, you've been achieving the rules, so if you had a year where you got, had to get back into the capping, well, you'd revisit those rules at that time, see what you do, what. And how you would see it, I mean, what everyone generally did. Is because everyone got their tax break right away. They sort of, the maximum that you could claw back at on the other side is where they went, I think the maximum was ten, the minimum was five, you'll see fives and tens in there. Um, that we generally went to the ten, clawed it back at the ten percent, the people who were actually getting increases, that's all was funded. I'd have to get into how it all worked, but. Commercial, I would love, it's real obvious, a commercial, right, uh, virtually at a hundred properties, your taxes were three hundred thousand. And if they were capped, and, and the people got a decrease, so if they have, half the price got a decrease, they got that decrease straight away, and so there'd be a, you know, your taxes there would drop by. Uh, half the hundred and fifty thousand, it might drop by fifty thousand, but the increases had to pay for that, but they were only paying for it at ten percent. So in reality, the rest of that increase, they got spread everywhere else.
What a game, what a game.
Well, it was really, and I mean, I'm not sure, are you aware where you miss balance, are still in the capping? I mean, I'm sure there are, and then, and, you know, there's some, maybe they had a lot of big changes, I'm not sure necessarily who was, but it's all not true, women lots, and we're a lot of municipalities still in the capping. That are still doing that and still having to explain where it's at and who's being impacted and. And it was just another little consideration when you're doing your taxes with that, right, when you're setting your tax rate, anyway, that's that schedule. And then the last one, I had something else there.
The tax extension here.
Yeah. I think that is what I wanted.
Schedule A, you got two schedules, the first one comes out. You don't even miss one.
Did we screw that?
Well, no, oh, I, when you asked me to review the bylaw, I put the legal description in the bylaw, so you only needed one schedule. Oh, so you don't, this, this can just be around, okay. Other than that.
Okay, so I guess we move through these recommend or the resolutions then. This is one eighty dash twenty twenty-three. Moved by councillor McKenzie, seconded by councillor Hart. Um, that leave be given to introduce a bylaw to set tax rate ratios for Nipigon Municipal Purposes for twenty twenty-three. That the bylaw be read a first and second times, that the said bylaw be read a third time, finally pass a numbered bylaw.
Which bylaw is that one?
It doesn't say that. You missed the one that was. Okay, it must be out of order.
Oh, sorry, the ratio bylaws, sorry, where did you say?
Resolution one eighty should be item four on your agenda, not item five. And four is consideration of the operating capital budget. Okay, so the resolution one eighty should be the one that approves those. Okay. And then we get for bylaws.
Yeah, I just wanted, the tax ratio bylaw can be first, sometimes they've not, but there you have to prove your ratio before you prove your taxes. Yeah. And you have to prove your taxes. The duties are.
Don't see, unless I'm missing it. Uh, so, there's tax rate reductions for prescribed property.
No, it's not a bylaw.
Oh.
It's just a resolution to adopt the budget.
That's what I mean, I don't see a resolution that states any of that.
Do you have it then?
The, it's on my resolution list. These are all bylaws.
Yeah. No, I didn't do reservations for those, I just.
Oh, right.
Put the bylaws. She's got a blank here. Can't put the cart in the horse.
No, we cannot.
So I thought by passing the bylaws, that, yeah. Yeah.
And then the amendment to capital budget, I don't think there's a resolution for that either. So that's covered.
I, I think it was my fault. Because we, we passed the bylaw and the schedule three is the capital budget, you've amended that capital budget, because you only had a reservation on that capital budget. So now by passing that bylaw, you're putting a new schedule, you've amended.
You've amended it.
So that's why I say you don't really, you can do it, but you don't really.
Do you wanna? You wanna second that? Okay, so, resolution one eighty twenty twenty-three. Moved by councillor West, uh, West Taver, seconded by councillor Hart, that council proves the twenty twenty-three operating and capital budgets as presented, all in favor? Opposed and carried. So the next one, if these are in order, um, will be the, the set tax rate ratios.
Yeah.
Bylaw number is nineteen twenty-three.
Nineteen twenty-three. So resolution number one eighty-one dash twenty twenty-three, moved by councillor McKenzie, seconded by councillor Hart. That leave be given to introduce a bylaw to set tax rate ratios for Nipigon Municipal Purposes for twenty twenty-three. That the bylaw be read a first and second times, that the said bylaw be read a third time, finally pass a numbered bylaw nineteen twenty-three of the township of Nipigon. All in favor? Uh, opposed and carried. Okay, so this is resolution one eighty-two. Dash twenty twenty-three, moved by councillor Hart, seconded by councillor McKenzie, that leave be given to introduce a bylaw. To set tax rate reductions for prescribed property, sub-classes for municipal purposes for twenty twenty-three. That the bylaw be read a first and second times, that the said bylaw be read a third time, finally passed and numbered bylaw nineteen twenty-four. Of the township of Nipigon, all in favor? Opposed and carried. Resolution one eighty-three twenty twenty-three. Moved by councillor McKenzie, seconded by councillor Hart. That leave be given to introduce a bylaw to set and levy the rates of taxation for the year twenty twenty-three. That the bylaw be read a first and second times, that the said bylaw be read a third time, finally passed and numbered bylaw nineteen twenty-five of the township of Nipigon, all in favor? Opposed and carried. Resolution one eighty-four twenty twenty-three. Moved by councillor Hart, seconded by councillor West Taver. That leave be given to introduce a bylaw respecting the collection of taxes for the year twenty twenty-three. That the bylaw be read a first and second times, that the bylaw, uh, the said bylaw be read a third time, finally passed and numbered by, bylaw nineteen twenty-six of the township of Nipigon, all in favor? Opposed and carried. Resolution one eighty-five dash twenty twenty-three, moved by councillor Hart, seconded by councillor McKenzie. That leave be given to introduce a bylaw to adopt optional tools for the purposes of administering limits for the commercial, industrial, and multi-residential property classes for the year twenty twenty-three. That the bylaw be read a first and second times, that the said bylaw be read a third time, finally passed a numbered bylaw nineteen twenty-seven of the township of Nipigon, all in favor? Opposed and carried. Um, one eighty-six, resolution one eighty-six dash twenty twenty-three. Moved by councillor Hart, seconded by councillor West Taver. That leave be given to amend, oh, oh, this should be amend, I think it says amend, amend, uh, bylaw. To authorize the execution of a tax areas extension agreement pursuant to section three seventy-eight of the municipal act for twenty-five Sanderson Street. That the bylaw be read a first and second times, that the said bylaw be read a third time, finally passed and numbered bylaw nineteen twenty-eight of the township of Nipigon. All in favor? Opposed and carried. And resolution one eighty-seven. Dash twenty twenty-three. Moved by councillor McKenzie, seconded by councillor. Um, councillor Hart, sorry, that the special meeting council do now adjourn, all in favor? Opposed and carried.